will be, if you do have a question, you will put it into the chat and we'll be sorting them at the Ms. Belleville and Mr. Missler are driving tonight and they will sort those and share them. Questions that we don't get to this evening, we will be putting out an FAQ tomorrow as well as a copy of this PowerPoint. This presentation is being recorded, so for folks who were not able to make it tonight, we will have it on our website. So that they too can view this at some point tomorrow. Folks, as you know, we're talking about reopening our schools. Come this fall, like every district in the Commonwealth and every school district across the United States are wrestling with the same questions. And situations and problems that we're wrestling with. As you folks may or may not know, back in June 25th, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education provided us with their initial school fall reopening guidance. As we are, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is the department at the state level in which we take our guidance. They are working closely with the Department of Public Health and the Governor's Office as well as medical professionals from all around Massachusetts and from across, across the country. The advice given to us, June 25th is in terms of reopening our schools, the goal is and the goal always will be to have our students in our schools in front of their teachers, with their teachers learning together. As we've had school in the past. Through DESI guidance to us in conjunction with medical experts. Given where we are as Massachusetts and our transmission rates and given the guidance on the mitigation strategies to put in place. Their recommendation was to have students return to the buildings in school. Our timeline by July 31st, we as a district had submit our preliminary reopening plan. And what that entails is three models and you've probably seen this in previous presentations where we were to provide a model if we were in person, remote or hybrid. We had to pay particular attention to meeting the needs of our high need students. And on 31st, we needed to indicate as a district which model we were leaning toward. On August 6th, that is tomorrow night now, the school committee will approve the final model and our final plan. And we will submit that comprehensive plan to the department by Monday, August 10. Once that is final, that's the school can be approved plan, we will be sharing that with the public. As, as we would with any change in working conditions, we would be working with our collective bargaining units in terms of changes in working conditions. So we are coming down to our timeline for decision making, but the work still will be happening over the next few weeks, fast and furious. The, the Parabola Project, which is a nice partnership between Ariadne Labs core experts from the Chan School of Public Health at Harvard University and Brigham and Women's Hospital. As well as the Learning Accelerator have been advising not only the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, but other countries and how they've been opening up their schools. We've had a good fortune to be one of their pilot districts across Commonwealth, one of eight. And the resources, they've been thinking about how to reopen schools since March. And the resources that have been made available to not only us, but to all districts has been absolutely tremendous. I, I shared the slide because in the top line where it says minimizing risks and maximizing learning. That's where we have been working and trying to find that balance throughout the past, past two months that we've been hunkered down. As we've been taking our, our guidance from DESI, we have been working through our health principles in terms of masks. One of the mitigating strategies that is used all across the globe, the use of masks. The guidance from the state indicated that students from grades two through 12 should be, are required to wear masks. Through our school committee, we would require all students pre K to, pre K to 12 to be wearing masks as well as all staff members. And that would be mandatory for everyone in our buildings. The initial guidance from DESI in terms of distance was three to six feet. Through the work of our school committee and our administrative team, we have, we are going with the six feet distance model and configuring our classrooms for six, six feet of distancing and working on our, on our spaces all across our schools. Our three models. The model to the far left and has the dotted line, it's green, it's returned without restrictions. That's, everyone comes back to the buildings without restrictions. And the pandemic has receded. The next is in-person learning with safety requirements. And there are some significant safety requirements in place to have anyone entering our buildings the same way as if you entered Hannaford, Walmart or, or anywhere else to have those in place, including our classrooms, schedules, et cetera. To the far right, we have remote learning and that is where all the learning would take place outside of the school. And we experienced some of that this past spring. As we hastily put that together and our staff and our parents, you folks, everyone did a tremendous job there. But a full remote learning model would be, would be more, would be more significant and more, more elaborate and diligent than it was this past spring. In between is a hybrid model where students would learn both in person and remotely. Just regarding our, regarding our remote learning. From DESI. There would be specific requirements, requirements for time on learning, requirements for attendance, requirements for grades, requirements for learning synchronously as well as asynchronously. And we'll talk about that in a few minutes. DESI had asked us as well, or had directed us, while we were considering our models, prioritizing students who are considered high needs, those with intensive needs, those folks who don't have reliable internet. Who are significantly behind academically and who are struggling with the remote learning. We've had a lot of questions regarding students on IEP, students with special education needs. And in our guidance. In the springtime, it was more around providing resources and support. Now, coming into the fall, all surfaces, all services will need to be delivered regardless of the model that we're in. And this is, this is important to note that the related services will be delivered depending on the learning model, the student's unique needs and of course with team input and parents as you as important members of those teams. Meetings will be held virtually except for some minor exceptions. And testing will be in person, some virtual, so that students can have the opportunity to be tested. But we are advocating that testing be done in person. Our recommendation as we spent from, we started thinking about reopening schools back in March. And we weren't sure how long this was going to last. So as we looked at what would be best for us. The administration has made the recommendation to our school committee that grades one through 12, we would be in a hybrid model where students would, learning would take place at school and outside of school. And the recommendation, this recommendation comes to us from the department as well, is that students in pre K kindergarten and students of high needs would attend school in person five days a week. Now, we know that there's no way that we can completely eliminate any risk. But we understand that we have to balance the needs found between offering essential learning opportunities for our, our students and protecting the health and safety of our students and staff. We're fortunate here in Massachusetts that we're currently experiencing low rates of transmission. And I believe that puts us in a, in a position to consider in-person learning at this time. Should we see an increase in our community, in our state and our clusters? We would be in touch and we are in continuous contact with our Board of Health officials who are in contact continuously with the Department of Public Health. And if there were, through monitoring the situation, these models are built to be on a continuum. So if we started the school year in a hybrid model, it is designed so that we could move into a remote model should the health factors determine that. As well as being, if we started a remote model, we could move into a hybrid. Again, we would be working with the Board of Health on that. And, and again, what factors into these decisions? When we look at what's ideal for students in terms of learning. We've, we need to accelerate our learning for learning that was, learning opportunities that perhaps were missed through this past spring when we hastily left March 13th. And also to looking at equity and being able to provide students with a robust education that we can provide them. As you folks can imagine, on the easiest day, teaching is a tremendously difficult job. But when we have all the students in the classroom, students come with a variety of different learning styles, different needs, different backgrounds and so forth. But we can control a large amount of those variables within the classroom. When students are working remotely, those variables become increasingly more difficult to, to accommodate. And therefore there's an inequity in our learning. So what we can do to have students in person. As well as concerns we have about the social emotional impact of students being disconnected, not only from their peers and their, their social groups, but also from their teachers. Lot of things to consider while making these recommendations. Regarding our curriculum and instruction. Our administration developing a district guide so that we have vertical connections for our curriculum, our standards, both horizontally and vertically. And I mentioned, mentioned previously synchronous learning. This is learning that happens in real time. Asynchronous learning occurs online through channels without real time instruction or interaction. The emphasis from DESI is that any remote or hybrid learning environment will have more synchronous learning than what we saw last spring. So again, emphasis on, on direct instruction, the emphasis on students attending their classes and keeping those schedules so that they become predictable for not only the students, for the teachers, but also for you, our parents, because we know any model outside of the norm is quite difficult. And that's overall regarding our scheduling. Looking to maximize time, but also allowing us to pivot between models. And being able to honor the students who are able to come back in person. As well as honor the students whose parents have chosen for them to learn remotely. And, and that's what we're talking about as well is that parents in our recommendation would have that choice. To be able to learn remotely or to come part-time in person. And this would help us move forward with the robust programming that we have here in Oxbridge Public Schools. What you have in front of you here, this is what, you know, this is what a week would look like. We are recommending a two, one, two model. And essentially you can see in a particular classroom, you could have four cohorts. Cohort A is they're in person in, in the school on Monday and Tuesday. And then on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, they would be learning remotely. Cohort B would be remote Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. And they would be in person Thursday and Friday. Cohort C are students that would be with us five days a week. And if you think about our high needs categories, those would be those students. And cohort D for students who parents have chosen for them to be a hundred percent remote. They would be remote five days a week. We have built in half days on Wednesdays, half days for our students so that we can provide additional planning and collaboration time for our staff members on Wednesday afternoons. As we would divide cohorts, we obviously would look at families that have if you're a parent and you have students at all three schools, we would work to ensure that your children would all be in the same cohort, pre K to 12. We've had parents asking if they could be grouped together in cohorts so that they can make look, learning pods or supervision more readily available to their friends and neighbors. We will be reaching out to you to that effect and, and seeking your input on that. And we will work with you and do the absolute best we can. As I mentioned with remote learning, remote learning is part of the hybrid model. But again, it will look different. The important thing to know is that it will follow a typical school day. So that as we do have to pivot from hybrid to remote. That your children, yourselves, our teachers will be on the same schedule. Procedurally. When we talk about whether students are remote or whether they're in person. There's a lot of procedures that typically we not take for granted, but that you can count on year after year in schools. So we've been laying out some detailed plans. Our administrators have been working on this and here are just a few examples. As we're talking about travel patterns within the building, all buildings will have lines down the middle of the corridors and stairways will be designated as just up or just down. As you can imagine, the revised entrance and dismissal patterns using a number of doors, different doors for different grade levels. Locker access, different practices for drop off of missing materials from parents. And there's just down to the nth detail. As we redesign, redesign and redefine how we do school here in Oxbridge. Food service will be adjusted each building. There'll be full access to technology for all students for the first time. To my knowledge, we are a one-to-one district. The tech now, technology platforms of, we've worked so that they are consistent by grade level. As you can see for our primary level seesaw for pre K and one and Google Classroom from grades two through 12 plus and oops, sorry. And our next one. The identification of procedures for COVID safe spaces in event of a suspected case. And we could talk a little bit about that. Notification and tracing practices, you know, with the Board of Health. Our, our lead nurse, Becky Padula could not be with us here tonight. She was all set to go last night and the power went out. But she has been working diligently with our Board of Health, with our school nurses as well as school nurses across Commonwealth based on the guidance and the procedures from DESI. And being able to have those procedures in place for all of our students. So additional measures we're taking in terms of signage at all the buildings, sanitation protocols. The work has just been, it's been ongoing, but we are definitely up to the challenge. On the next slide, Patrick. Some of the key differences. At the TAF, for example, the change in how specials will run. Eight weeks for each of the five specialists trying to reduce the cohorts in which our specialist teachers will see students rather than seeing students from all across the building all year. Our, our teams have been working hard on, on how to work those schedules. Lunchtime, as you can imagine, has been complicated. But spending time looking at guidance and putting these measures into place. At the Whiten, the use of the breakfast card procedure, students allowed to carry backpacks. Next slide, please, Patrick. At the high school, some changes there in terms of the bell schedule. Regardless of in-person or remote, the schedule rotation will be predetermined on a weekly basis. And Mr. Rubin could talk more to that. Should you want to hear about it. Looking at the size of the cafeteria at Expert High School has changed the, the lunch service to accommodate dismissal. As well as, you know, the use of several outdoor areas for classes. Next slide, please, Patrick. One of the major questions we receive from parents, we receive from staff. And we continuously ask ourselves. We're bringing, we're recommending to bring folks back into the building. Our educators, our staff, our administrative staff and our students and people are concerned. On a link we, we have here. DESI has provided us with, and again, in concert with the wonderful medical professionals that we have here in the Commonwealth. Specific protocols for responding to students or staff, just COVID related scenarios, be it on the school, on the bus or in community settings. Again, Nurse Becky is not here specifically to talk about school protocols, but Kristen Black from the Board of Health is quite fluent in these and is more than happy to answer some of those questions for us this evening. The last slide we have here. This is regarding questions that we've had around ventilation airflow in our, in our district and Mr. Hyde, our business manager, has been working with not only the guidance from DESI and with Mr. Pashorn, our director of facilities. But also to working with folks from the Parabola Project who have written these guidelines for the Commonwealth and for other states as well. I'm going to ask Mr. Hyde just to speak a few minutes about the ventilation that we have here in our schools.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Tiano, and good evening, everybody. I just wanted to share this document with you. This is just a basic decision tree. There's a lot of confusion and conversation about air ventilation. So this has helped schools determine what's best air ventilation system for their particular school based on the infrastructure of their facility. Like Dr. Tiano just said, Mr. Pashorn, our facilities director, principal, Leanne Damaco and myself, we went through this guide. Which is, you know, a hundred pages or so with Jose Sedino Laurent, who is the author of this of, up at Harvard for the Commonwealth's procedures. So we're really proud of the work and he was really proud of the work that we're doing to improve air quality in Oxbridge. So we're happy about that. Basically, there's two sides. There's a building relies on natural ventilation. You do this, you open your windows. Ninety percent of the schools in America, if not in Massachusetts anyway, have buildings that have mechanically ventilated systems, as does Oxbridge. We have free schools, they all have ventilation systems that have been maintained, that have been either in or replaced. We spent almost a half a million dollars on our ventilation just in the past two years. And this year it's been, since the COVID broke out, it's been pretty much a full-time gig for us. So what you do is you increase the air, the outdoor air and you pull out as much as you possibly can, creating ventilation. So we're really happy to say that, you know, we were bringing in more fresh air than we ever have. We're filtering the indoor air. We've, we already started receiving some of the Mur 13s, which has, we have irregular sized. They're custom made filters. So, because the system is so old, but they are here, they were coming in anyway. But all filters have been inspected, have all been changed. The whole HVAC system has been greased, oiled and commissioned at the high schools as well with new electronic controls for the TAFT. So I would not lose any sleep at all that schools are not properly ventilated.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. I appreciate that. Before we take the questions, I just wanted to, I just wanted to share with you folks, I know we've spent the afternoon working with representatives from the Expert Teachers Association. We in the past have had a wonderful relationship with our teachers association. We've done a lot of great work together. We still have a wonderful relationship with our teachers association. Concerns brought forth to us directly and then via letter that was made public. Please know that we are in conversation with our, with the UTA and we look forward to working with them. And ensuring that we have all of our staff, all of our students safe and we come back together, educating our students in the fall. I appreciate all of their efforts and we'll go forward together. Ms. Belleville, I'm sure we have a couple of questions.
We do, Dr. Tiano. One of them is, is that people have heard a lot from the state that the state's looking to partner with a third party around remote learning and will the district be looking at that model or will we be using our own model for remote learning?
The state has contracted with a learning management system that could be made, that is being made available to the districts at a reasonable price. In terms of supporting our learning models, but we are developing our own learning model here in Oxbridge. And the state is, is trying to provide us with all the tools they can. Hope that answers that question.
There's another question around internet. With internet always being stable, what will the options be put in place for students that are remote on days where it's not working and they are unable to participate?
Perhaps one of our principals could take that one.
I, I can, I can do that. I mean, I think it'd be no different for us. I think it's, it's a fair question. But I think that's where, you know, the, the open lines of communication are important. There's still going to be people in the building. And so if it's the internet and it's the phone lines. Obviously that, that makes things difficult, but Mr. Missler has a, a pretty, pretty solid relationship with our utility folks. I mean, just in the last couple of weeks with respect to graduation. We knew probably before most of the community that we were going to have some intermittent outages. Because of, because of some utility work that, that was necessitated by a falling tree. So, you know, it comes down to being flexible and it's hard to hold students accountable when they, they cannot meet a deadline. And just to that point, I mean, I'm, I'm enrolled in the class personally right now. Our deadline is Wednesday at noon and there were a lot of folks who couldn't meet the deadline because of power outages. And, you know, there was a couple of text messages exchanged and those that could get online sent a message to the coordinator of the course and said, hey, look, this, this person's doesn't have, doesn't have power. It's actually not that different than if you can imagine what happens sometimes when there's, you know, a major storm or something happens. You know, and we, we can't get kids to school on time. You know, they might miss part of the first period class. We can't hold them accountable because the bus, the bus was late. So it's just a transference of that kind of strategy and being flexible because some people might not sometimes.
Thanks, Mr. Rubin.
No problem.
Dr. Tiana, could you just reiterate the, the plan for if someone starts remotely about the potential of them being able to move into one of the other models if a parent is comfortable?
Sure. We should we start in a hybrid model? We will have students that are identified to come into the school for in-person learning, starting with our, our high needs folks. As well as, as well as students who choose that model. We will have the opportunity as we are working with students through our MTSS programming that we may feel and recommend to parents that perhaps if their child is working remotely that they may benefit from because we've seen in, in some of our work with them. That they really could use some in-person instruction and, and support. In terms of, in, in terms of folks who choose remote. We will be putting out an email survey to you and, and asking people for your choice. We will be putting out an email survey to you and asking people for your choice. And we'll work with our committee, we'll work with our administration in terms of when we assess the opportunity for students to go from remote to hybrid. Not sure I'm saying that correctly. For our efforts in our hybrid, we'll reassess the programming continuously. But we're shooting for eight weeks and really assess how things are going. If, if the health data remains stable and things are going well, we can look at the numbers that we have to be able to accommodate students whose family had chosen remote to move back into hybrid. So that'll be on an ongoing basis. I hope I answered that correctly.
There are a lot of questions about what, what will the data look like for us to swing between models and our contact with the Board of Health around safety and how involved will they be as far as monitoring our, our progress? As well as contact with you, Dr. Tiano, is that going to be weekly, just as far as health?
Sure. And I'll let Dr. Black jump in as well, but we have, between Nurse Becky, myself, we're in constant contact with the Board of Health. They've been outstanding partners with us. And one of the questions that we've had for the Board of Health that a lot of districts have had. And our questions, they contact the Department of Public Health, looking at what's, what's the trigger metric in terms of, in, in terms of where we would deem going from, say, a hybrid to full remote or, or back there. Those metrics have not been determined in terms of transmission rate. But where Massachusetts is on the lower end right now, you know, obviously, we feel comfortable, or we would not be recommending it. But perhaps, Dr. Black, you could jump in here. Kristen? Is she still on, Patrick?
No, I'm here. I'm sorry for the delay. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, I was not allowed to unmute, so sorry for the delay. The Board of Health role through this process is, the Board of Health is responsible for disease prevention and surveillance in the town of Exbridge. So if we have a positive case, we are the party that is notified, not necessarily the schools. So our role will be to determine if anyone is determined to be positive a resident in, in the town of Exbridge. To determine that if they were attending or participating in Exbridge Public Schools when they were infectious. And in the event that they were, we would reach out to the school administrator to make sure that we fulfill the contact tracing process and notify any families who may be at risk, students and staff. So we are closely following it. We've been working with businesses throughout Exbridge through this process. The skilled nursing facility in town, and we will now be, you know, working with Exbridge Public Schools closely on this. So our role is to support Exbridge Public Schools through this process, and we work very closely with Mass DPH. So I want to say that I am not an infectious disease expert, but our role is that we know, we, we make those big decisions in concert with the Mass Department of Public Health. And we attend weekly meetings, and mom and actually three weekly calls with the Mass Department of Public Health to stay up to date on this rapidly evolving situation.
And so, Kristen, it is safe to say that you are monitoring what's happening here in Exbridge as well as, you know, across the Commonwealth. And if there were a need to move between models, that would be, we would be in constant communication.
Correct. So there's been a lot of questions around what would trigger a school closure. That's very situation-specific. So what, in the public health world, what we do is we refer to multiple cases that are tied to a single event as a cluster. And so what we would be looking for, if we notice that there is more than one positive case that was associated in one way with our schools. We would quickly look to get control of that situation. So for example, if you had three cases that happened in, let's say, the first month of school, but they were spread throughout different schools. It, it might not be a cluster if they really weren't tied. Maybe it's the same family. But if we were to have, let's say, three cases that popped up in two-week period at one school, that's a real issue. That might be, you know, transmission, or people are becoming infected at school. And we will take that very seriously and, and look to make immediately, immediate closures if needed. Again, that decision's in concert with the public health experts over at the Mass Department of Public Health, and then obviously working with your school administrators.
Thank you. I hope that answered that question.
Dr. Tiano, can you speak to sports and internships in the three models as far as if we were remote? If the possibility of sports would occur as far as, as well as internships and if we are moving throughout the models?
On our conference call with the Commissioner of Education earlier this week, I do know regarding athletics, if we were in a remote model. There would be no athletics. And I'm, I don't know for sure regarding internships. Mr. Rubin, do you know about that?
So, two things. One, actually, the MIAA is going to be releasing some guidance on that, and that is correct. If we are remote, the likelihood of having interscholastic athletics will be nil. That, that has to do a lot with attendance and safety. The, the thinking being that if you're not well enough as a community to be attending school, then you're probably not well enough to take the risk of putting kids in close contact that athletics would be. As far as internships go, we will be working with our counselors and the students, particularly around most of our in-house internships. We should be able to satisfy a good many of those. Some of the external ones are really going to depend on, A, the employers. And B, the families, the individual decision. There may be some places where the employers are willing to have people, but families decide that it is not necessarily something they would still like to participate in. And in which case, we have actually partnered with several districts and communities nationally to work on some of those very same skills that students would get through an internship, but in a more in-house way. So we would find a way to accommodate the kids' individual interests and not necessarily dump them back into three or four classes that they weren't necessarily interested in. With, with the, with the hope of being able to, to meet those individual wants, desires, et cetera, et cetera. So we do have a plan for working with those seniors. It's mostly seniors. And specifically those places of employment, be they in-house or externally.
Thank you.
Dr. Tiano, can you speak to substitutes? And does the district feel that we'll have enough substitutes and coverage? Especially if there are, are teachers who will go out sick and need to be quarantined for 14 days?
That, that is a concern for every school district in the Commonwealth. We are, we have contacted and have confirmation regarding our subs. And along with training for our professional staff, our support staff. We are currently working on training what that would look like for our substitutes as well. We're, we're looking at that. We have, obviously, every year, we have concerns regarding acquiring new talent every year. Our substitutes are a valuable part of our team, and, you know, they do a lot of great work. But we're, we're looking into that right now.
Dr. Tiano, could you speak a little bit more around the hybrid model and what that would look like in a classroom? Is it a classroom teacher going to be monitoring, monitoring remote students as well as the students that they have in their classrooms? And how will we address the sound issues? Or will we be looking at just having certain remote teachers? As well as will students be sitting in front of a computer screen if they are in school all day?
This is something we've been wrestling with a lot. I, I would ask one of the principals if they want to jump in here.
I would ask Wendy to jump in because I know that Wendy.
Ms. Phillips? Wendy's not here at the moment?
No, she is. I needed to unmute her. I'm sorry.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Sorry, folks. She's still muted.
I'm, I'm working on it. Sorry, technical difficulty.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So the question was about the hybrid model, correct?
Yes.
So we've been exploring different models of how we're gonna, we're gonna do that. We've talked about at the elementary level, using a station model where there will be different stations. And the students will rotate through those stations, so they'll be working in small groups, similar to what they would do in the classroom. And the students in the remote environment would be participating in the remote accessible stations. The teacher would be monitoring that along with a support person. And the support person would really be making sure of communicating, making sure that the, I know the question was about sound. Making sure that the messages were being conveyed and that students could hear. So that would be one model. Using an asynchronous model might be another model for the upper, upper grade levels. And all of that, we're planning on some professional development, practicing it with teacher groups before school opens so that we have those routines down.
Thank you.
Dr. Tiano, several families have asked if there is a way that we could, in a town hall or what have you, show a preview of what hybrid would look like? Or some of the curriculum that will be used?
Ms. Phillips?
Yeah, I was gonna say I can take that as well. We are planning on doing some parent training as well, so I will add that to the list. I think it's a good idea. We thought, we definitely thought of it for our, our teachers. And, you know, we're really, I have a list of all the different roles, all the different people affected by remote learning. And working with our tech integration specialists, the principals, our, our technology team. We're gonna come up with a suite of offerings so that everyone is ready for the model that's used at their, their level.
Thank you. There are, there is a question around our high-needs students. And if I am a family and I have a high-needs student, and then I don't have a high-needs student, is there a consideration by the district of allowing both children to come in person?
That could be a consideration. And as I mentioned previously, we will be reaching out to you as we're putting cohorts together. And folks will have the opportunity to share individual situations with us.
Could, could you speak, or maybe Ms. Ramsdale could speak to this around Cohort C, if they were all in? Would they be interacting with Cohort A and Cohort B? Because obviously, there's a concern of this exposure in classrooms.
Sure.
I think what that comes down to is looking at the student's IEP. If it's a student with disability and is requiring special education services. If they're part of group A or B, Cohort A or B, that really looks at the student's placement. Those would be team decisions. Those would be team decisions that were made with the families and, and or guardians, as engagement with families at this time is critical. So it could be, and it could not be, dependent on the student's placement.
Thank you.
That answers the question.
Can we speak to just safety protocols in the sense of cleaning? Will we be sharing with families around what the increased cleaning procedures are, as well as the materials that we will be utilizing?
Mr. Hyde, do you want to take that?
Yeah, I'd be happy to take that one, Dr. Tiano. We do have, so everyone at home knows, very specific protocols for enhanced cleaning during the day, which is beyond our routine cleaning we usually do. High-touch areas are done three times a day during, in the school time. They're done before school opens. They're done about 10:00 in the morning. They're done immediately after lunch, and then they're done after the school is closed. So high-touch areas are done constantly. We have protocols in place for what needs to be cleaned, when it needs to be cleaned, and by whom is cleaning it. ABM is a national company who deals with this on really a national level. And I have all the information. If you just reach out to me, I'd be happy to share with you, have a conversation with you about the chemicals we use. Virix is one, and the other name, I know it, I just can't think of it right this moment.
And also, Mr. Mr. Hyde, that'll be on our website. We're putting, we're putting the finishing touches on a separate webpage with all of this information that folks will be able to access.
Mr. Hyde, there is a question regarding the ventilation and that it's evaluated. Question is, was that evaluated by an outside vendor? And is there a report that's available?
Yes, there is. A lot of the reports are available, but we can tell you what, we have letters from our HVAC companies. First of all, the public schools engineering controls have been prioritized in our district. They have been for the past year, even prior to COVID. But in terms of our unit vent systems that draw air into the building and our exhaust systems that, that pull the air through the building and circulate air. They have all been serviced. In the past June, July, we did complete service on every single machine, every single unit vent. HVAC piece of equipment and exhaust system, which includes the replacement of all the filters if needed, switches, belts, thermostats. The motors, the fans, everything was adjusted and bearings were greased, et cetera. So they were all operational. The companies that we use, local companies, we have three, actually, three HVAC companies. As well as a former facilities director, who is now, kind of takes a lead a lot with our HVAC system. Because he has historical knowledge of it. It is, they are old systems, except for the high school, as you know. We've just replaced modern physical plant digital controls at the Taft. The interface with the older pneumatic system that we have in the district. I don't want to get too technical with everybody. But we, they have been commissioned by three different local vendors, as well as whatever maintenance person who's pretty much dedicated to the HVACs of our system. So if you want more information, I'd be happy to give it to you. I just not sure how much you would be looking for.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. Dr. Tiano, or maybe Patrick, could you speak to, families are wondering about the technology that will be made available to them? Will we be handing out Chromebooks again, and will there be available technology, hotspots?
Absolutely. So similar to what we did at the end, or during the start of COVID, we reached out to families in need, and they reached out to us, and we provided Chromebooks. What we've done in the district is we were lucky enough to purchase Chromebooks before every school started to purchase. And now the lead time for a lot of districts is past November, but we have everyone from pre-K, or, excuse me, from kindergarten all the way through seventh grade. So Exbridge is a K through 12, one-to-one district at this very moment. We have up on our website, which we're gonna be sharing out to families, an insurance program through Worth Ave. This will allow you to purchase, I believe it's $27 for the year for insurance on those devices. We'll send out more on this. We also have hotspots available for families in need. And just like at the end of last year, we have, we're working with Spectrum. We're working with any kind of provider that we can to help you. If you have issues with internet at home, please reach out to me. We have hotspots that, that boom out towards our parking lots. We have designated spots you could park a car and get Wi-Fi if need be with the Exbridge device. At the end of the day, absolutely reach out to us. We've been working with families to try and get them free, cheap, reduced, whatever they need, internet for their home, something that's reliable. And similar to what Mr. Rubin said, I know nothing's going to be perfect, so we're gonna have to adjust a little bit here and there, but please reach out to me on anything that you need.
Thanks, Patrick.
Dr. Tiano, there's a question around the calendar, and will opening be delayed?
Dr. Tiano, there's a question around the calendar, and will opening be delayed with the Mass State guidance that came out? And what does that look like for us here in Oxbridge?
The Commissioner, guidance came out last week, I believe it was, where the school year is being shortened from 180 school days for students to 170 school days for students. And those 10 days are built in for all of us, all of our districts, teachers, administrators, to really fine-tune our planning regarding remote learning or in-person under these conditions. We have a date of September 16th. If we use all 10 days, Training Professional Development Days, we are to be able to start no later than September 16th. If we needed to start after that, then we would have to apply for a waiver. Typically, before school starts, before children arrive, we do have at least two days for our staff. One is an orientation slash day that staff work in their rooms, the other is a professional development day. Given our collective bargaining unit, there are stipulations in terms of starting before a certain day and so forth. So we will work with the committee as well as with the UTA in terms of how those days play out. The 10 days allotted by the Commissioner are to be used solely before school starts for training, and we're grateful for those days. How those play out, I believe will be starting September 16th, but we will get back to you. The, any calendar changes for next year will need to be approved by the school committee, so the process is not, we'll do it as quickly as we can, but we need to do it as thoughtfully as we can. And I know that impacts everybody in terms of your lives, and we'll get that done.
Dr. Tiano, there's also a question, and I probably can't answer this, about, there's a lot of families wondering about when groupings will go out. And I certainly know that as principals, we've been working on those groupings and that families are concerned about the cohorting. And as soon as we get kind of final data as far as models and what model we're utilizing and what models families want, we'll be able to issue that. But that's, that's something that we've been doing kind of around the clock, too.
We've time for one more, Ms. Phillips?
So, so there's a lot of questions around just testing, temperature checks, protocols around that. I don't know if, if we can have, if you want to answer that, if you want Kristin Black to come back, Dr. Black to come back on, but just the concern around rapid testing, you know, will Oxbridge, how do they go about getting rapid testing? And are we doing any temperature checks?
There is not a requirement for rapid testing for, I'm sorry, let me speak to temperature checks. There's not a requirement through DESI for temperature checks for people entering the building. I'll let, or I'll ask Kristin Black to jump in on the second part of that.
So, yeah, and I just want to expand further on temperature checks. I know very early on, that was all the rave, was trying to protect everyone's safety and screen for COVID. You know, and speaking with our local public health nurses who are interviewing all COVID-19, you know, positive cases, we're just not seeing temperature all that often, and when we do see it, you know, it's often with other symptoms. So, you know, temperature checks alone don't really solve the problem, and as we're approaching flu season and all the other things that kids get in the fall, if we were doing temperature checks, we could end up with a lot of confusion. And also with temperature checks, those really fast, rapid ones are not all that accurate. So, you know, when accuracy is about a degree off, you would end up false identifying a lot of students walking through the door with that positive. So for that reason, DPH actually removed temperature checks as a requirement from the original camp guidance that came out earlier this summer. And that's why, again, you're not seeing temperature checks in any of DESI's guidance currently for schools. And I know Dr. Tab Scott's on the, on the line, and he could talk to you for hours about temperature checks as a lifelong pediatrician, and I know all along he had concerns with the use of them. Regarding COVID-19 testing, it's rapidly evolving in Massachusetts. We'll see a test center appear, and then it pops up, and now it's gone. You know, I, what, I did produce a memo for the school committee, and again, we're recommending that everyone refer to, there's an interactive testing map that's available on DPH's website, and we can include that link. We're closely monitoring that, although we don't have any test sites in Oxbridge within a 20-mile radius, I believe we have 11. We will provide a list to the schools in the event anyone's symptomatic to show you the preferred labs. There is some differences in testing times. If lab, testing sites are sending their samples out of state, it can take up to 10 days to get a test result back, but the in-state samples are being processed in less than 48 hours. The overall state average that was provided to us last week by DPH was an average of 2.2 days for the return of test results. So you may be hearing the extreme. We do have a few local testing sites in our area where they are seeing that 10-plus days, and we're gonna make sure that we're referring families to the, the sites with the faster turnaround time. Unfortunately, we're not, at this time, the state of Massachusetts does not have plans to offer that rapid test, you know, let's say, at a school or, you know, a facility like that. So I wish we had rapid testing, that's just not the reality for us right now in Massachusetts. I think our best bet is that we're seeing around 48 hours or less if we're picking correct labs. Massachusetts right now has a stop-the-spread program where they're offering free testing. They do have around a 24-hour turnaround, but there are some scheduling issues with appointments. So we're hoping to learn a lot more about testing in the next few weeks, and we will be making sure to work very closely with our schools to make sure we're referring families to testing sites that are gonna have a faster turnaround time.
Thank you, Kristin. And on the Board of Health's website, they have very up-to-date information regarding all things COVID, and it's been a great resource. We've used that, we've used that continuously throughout the past, past few months. Folks, we're coming to the end of our time, and I know that this is a lot of information. And I can tell you that as we are, we're trying to reinvent education. The previous model we had pre-COVID, you know, we had taken decades to put that into place. And right now, we are asked to create three different models and be able to do that within, within a few months. And watching the state work together collaboratively, you know, there's been some frustration on municipalities parts in terms of, why doesn't the state just tell us X, Y, Z? Because they're still figuring it out. They're still looking at data. There's a lot of groups who are doing research, a lot of folks, and as they, as they consolidate that and really streamline it for specific guidance for us, you know, each week for our school administration, we would have guidance that would come out, and then it would come out again piecemeal. And for us to be able to download it, to make sense of it, and then to see what that looks like at the, at the TAFT level, the White level, at the high school level, and then work with our, our teachers, and then to bounce those ideas off our parents, has really been nothing but just an absolute tremendous, to see everybody working so hard and working together at the same time. It really is overwhelming. We are, I'm proud of everybody, proud of our administrators, I'm proud of our teachers, I'm proud of you, our parents. We know the work that you've done. You didn't go to school for education, and, you know, you find yourself teaching third grade math, and it's, it's not optimal. None of these options are optimal, but they have been, this is the position we find ourselves in. And as Plato said back in 380, I just looked it up, you know, necessity is the mother of invention. It's, it's an opportunity for us to rethink how we do school. It's an opportunity for us to rethink how we collaborate, how we engage with each other, not only as professional colleagues, but as parents, and, and just as a community. So while this is, this is burdensome, and this is heavy, and it's sad, and it's anxiety-ridden, it, it's, you know, trying to find those silver linings that we still have teachers that care about your kids, we still have parents that want to work with our faculty, and we have supportive community that really wants to do right by our kids. It's really, it's difficult, but we're gonna continue to work together through this, and I know we're gonna come out the other side. This is a work in progress. The plans that we have been developing right up until this past weekend, and making changes based on guidance, we were at the school committee meeting not long ago, and guidance came out while I was, while we were sitting there. And as more data comes in, not only at the local level through our Board of Health and through the work that we're doing, but also at the state level and the federal level, we'll, we'll be closely monitoring what we do, and we will be making adjustments in real time to the best of our abilities. We do have, again, I just want to thank everybody for being here. I want to thank our administrators, I want to thank our school committee members who are on board. They've been put into a difficult position, and, and they have been advocating and asking some really difficult questions. Members of our UT, UTA board challenging us on, on procedures and asking good questions, and that's what we're all supposed to be doing, because we want to make sure we get it right. Bottom line, we want your kids to be safe, we want them, we want our staff to be safe, but we also want them to have the opportunity to learn and grow, and minimizing risks and maximizing learning. That's what we're trying to do together. Folks, as I mentioned, we, I'm sure there are a lot more questions out there. We will be putting out an FAQ, we will have, providing information on our website, look for that. We'll be putting out a survey to, to our parents as well regarding your intentions. I hope you found this helpful. We have recorded this, we will put this out. I'll send it out via email, we'll put it on the website as well, for your friends and neighbors who are, who are unable to be with us this evening. Again, thank you, everyone. We hope you have a safe and wonderful night, and we will talk to you soon. Thank you.